Order because of COVID-19 social distancing recommendations. Our meeting this evening is being held virtually via Zoom. Council members, city staff and myself are all joining remotely. The public is invited to participate by using the instructions that are included in the city council calendar item. That's listed on the front page of mission KS.org. Public participants will be allowed to make comments through the online chat feature. Please note that your comments will be visible by the entire group. If you wish to make a comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audrey, would you please call roll?
Bolton House.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Flora.
Hang on, hang on. If you are on this call and you have your mic open, would you please mute, please?
Flora.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
Kring.
Here.
Rothrock.
Here.
Slash Mocker. Slash Mocker.
You can't.
We can't hear him, but he's saying here.
He's saying he's here, but we can't hear him.
Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
I don't see any.
Emily, can you, can you tell who's mic?
I think we have it now.
Okay, thank you. All right, number one on our agenda this evening is public hearings. We do have two public hearings tonight. The first is a division of the Rock Creek Redevelopment District Number Three, which includes the Mission Mart Shopping Center and Mission Bowl into two redevelopment districts. At this time, I would like to open the public hearings. And also Mr. Kevin Wimpy of Gilmore and Bell. Well, would you please provide us with an overview of the request and the process?
Yes, certainly, certainly, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell City Bond Council. And provide a brief overview about the division of the TIF district here, which should be fairly familiar. You recall that the city council about a year ago undertook a similar action to divide the original Rock Creek redevelopment districts into five separate TIF districts. To start with, the ordinance being considered later this evening accomplishes several items. And it's the council's sort of holistic final approval of the proposed Mission Bowl redevelopment project. And two of the subcomponents do require public hearings. The first being division of the TIF district and the second is adoption of the TIF plan, which will be a subsequent public hearing tonight. And the statute requires about those public hearings. And so we've divided them to check all the statutory boxes and also help compartmentalize each component of the project and request for tonight. So to address the division of the TIF districts, start just by way of background. Again, the larger gateway redevelopment district created over 15 years ago was divided into five separate districts. A little over a year ago now in 2019. And one of the, one of the remaining districts now is TIF District Number Three that's at issue this evening. The purpose of dividing redevelopment district number three into further components. If you recall that under TIF, the revenues for TIF are driven by incremental property values, meaning the increase in assessed valuation and those incremental property taxes make available the funds to reimburse those TIF costs. And the county calculates that increment on a district-wide basis. So that means that, you know, if you have several lots under one TIF district, those values are aggregated in order to determine the increment under that TIF district. And so the purpose of dividing this tonight is simply to isolate the applicant's project and their lots where the proposed apartment projects going. And then that way, the success of its TIF increment is untethered anywhere else in the district. And secondarily, it does reserve what we're calling TIF District Three B, which is the remainder of current District Three A. Excuse me, District Three. And even a later developer would propose a plan in that area. Last point to wrap up on this part is the process under the statute. The statute allows dividing a TIF district by consideration of an ordinance following notice to the public and a public hearing. And so you recall at your first meeting, the special meeting in November, the city council did adopt a resolution calling a public hearing on both of these matters. That resolution's been published pursuant to the statute and mailed to constituents of the district. And so tonight you are all set for your public hearing, after which you may consider the ordinance to proceed with, among other things, the division of TIF District Number Three into the two separate TIF districts. So with that brief overview, I'm happy to field any questions you might have or stand by.
All right, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to the division of the two redevelopment districts? If so, please note that in the chat feature and we will call on you to speak. Seeing no further comment or discussion, I will formally close the public hearing. The council will consider an ordinance to formally subdivide the redevelopment district number three into three A and three B under the Finance and Administration Committee report from Councilmember Kring. The next public hearing is the adoption of a tax increment finance redevelopment plan for Rock Creek Redevelopment District Number Three A. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Mr. Scott, would you like to introduce the developer for a brief presentation of the TIF project plan?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my video's out working, but look like my voice is. So we have with us this evening, Mr. Banks Floodman. He's with the Sunflower Group and he is the developer on this project. So I'm just going to hand it off to Mr. Floodman. He's going to give a very high-level overview of the proposed project for the site.
Perfect. Thanks for the introduction, Brian. Let me share my, can you, can you share the screen here? Let's see if that's working now. Perfect. Thank you. Everybody see that screen? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, the first thing I do want to note, and that has been a topic that I've discussed with many of the constituents, is, is the color and the design of the building. I will say that we do plan on changing the color and we will change some of the design elements of the building. We'll obviously work through the, the final development plan with those changes. But we, I have had conversations, like I said, with numerous constituents. And that is absolutely something we are willing to do in order to comply with what we feel like is a fantastic area. And so what you see here is some of the, the older renderings. Again, this color scheme will change a little bit, but overall the.
Thanks, thanks.
Banks. Desktop, not the presentation.
Yeah, you lost the presentation. It's a beautiful desktop, but.
Let's. How's that?
Still just a desktop.
There we go. Now it's gone again.
Is it there now?
No.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So what you see here is the, the overall complex. It's going to consist of, it'll be in between 161 to 168 units. We think it's going to be closer to right at that 161 units currently. It's going to be a mix of live-work units, studios, ones and two bedrooms. Everybody's very familiar with the site, a little over a 3.1 acre site. It's going to be podium, first floor, four stories of residential above that with a rooftop pool. Here and that will be screened, that is going to be located on the southwest portion of the site. The overall property is also going to have a dog park that is going to be restricted to residents for portions of the day and then open up to individuals utilizing the Rock Creek Trail for portions of the day as well. There's going to be a fitness park. The site is a little unique regarding the number of easements that we're kind of navigating. We've got a cell tower here that is actually a separate property. And so there's going to be an access easement that we need to, we will continue to make sure that, that cell tower has and individuals that need to utilize that cell tower will have access. And those are also a large sewage line that goes through right here, if you can see my cursor, that we're going to readjust and, and push it a little bit to the east and then, and then directly north. There's also an easement over here on the west side to ensure Johnson County wastewater can, can get access to their building. So we're working through a few little easements here and there, but, but we feel like we've developed a, a plan that we're really excited about. And we think will be an exciting development for the city of Mission for years to come. This is just a kind of parking, we're planning on parking in this facility. One parking space per bed, highly amenitized Class A facility that's going to have meeting rooms, clubhouse, you know, game rooms, you name it, this facility will have it, will have some concierge services, et cetera. You know, we want individuals that live here to, you know, make Mission home, obviously, when they're living in the facility, but also afterwards. I think that's a, this is definitely a stepping stone for people that are looking for a permanent place to live when they do decide to purchase. And for people that may want to be a little more nimble, looking to get out of that purchase phase and maybe live in a great area, but, but spend a lot of time traveling. So we think this is going to accommodate a wider range of people that, that want to call Mission home. You can see here the live-work units. So we've got the first floor live-work units. There's going to be roughly 15 feet of clearance on these units. Very neat unit's going to have a, an office component. You know, we envision this being a lot of individuals that work from home, but still want to have gatherings of business meetings at their, that their, at their office. And then they'll have a stair actually within their space that'll go up to a private one-bedroom, one-bath, 625 square foot unit, which we think is going to be very, very successful. And we were planning on actually doing this before COVID, but we think that COVID has probably created even more of a demand for a situation in setting like this. The units above, again, there's going to be four stories of residential units above. All will have nine-foot and 10-foot ceilings, which we do feel is, is very important. We don't want to go any lower than the nine-foot ceilings. But again, highly amenitized area that we think will be very, very successful. This is the cell tower we're kind of navigating around that I know everybody's very familiar with. But we think we do a good job of shielding it. Our goal is to, as you can see with the site plan here, really butt up our, our development and engage Martway as much as possible. Hide the, any surface parking, we'll have some executive parking underneath the structure as well. And then there'll be some storage and garages down here that'll really, the objective of that is to create a little bit of a buffer between us and the, the Johnson County wastewater facility. The rest are just some pretty pictures, Brian. So that's, that's, that's a quick overview. I know everybody's pretty familiar with the project, but if there are any questions, I would be, be happy to, to answer them.
Hunter, I'm sorry, Banks, I think when we were having some issues getting the presentation up first, you had a, there we go.
That one right there?
That one, right? If you wouldn't mind just kind of addressing, because I think we, we lost out on that one as you started your presentation.
This, what this, the slide showing is the fact that, that we understand the feedback we've received from constituents in the area. We are going to address some of the color concerns that I know people do have. And we, and we're going to take it a step further and address some design elements as well. And we, we, you know, we're going to do our best to incorporate a lot of the great aspects of Mission, but there will be some changes to this design that will be addressed as we work through the final development plan. And then you've got, this is just a larger shot of Laura, what, what you were talking about and what you saw on that last slide. Again, just options that we, we're exploring, but more importantly, we want to show that we are, we hear you and we are going to be making some of these adjustments.
All right, is Scott, Mr. Scott, do you have anything to add to that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this TIF project plan? If so, please note that in the chat feature and we can call on you to speak. Seeing no further comment or discussion, I will formally close the public hearing. The council will consider an ordinance to formally approve the adoption of the redevelopment project plan for Rock Creek Redevelopment District Number Three A under the Finance and Administration Committee report from Councilmember Kring. All right, moving on to item number two, special presentations, we have none. Item number three is issuance of notes and bonds. And we do not have any special, any notes or bonds to consider this evening, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda does have eight items on it this evening. Our council committees met on December 2nd and we fully discussed each of these items. The committee agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. Other items considered by the committee will be presented under the various committee reports later on our agenda this evening. If a council member or a member of the public would like any of these items removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
If the city consent agenda has printed items four A through four I.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Slash Mocker.
Aye.
Thomas. Bolton House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Anne Flora.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item five, public comments. If any member of the public that's participating via Zoom would like to make a public comment on items not included on our agenda this evening, now would be the time to make that request. Please submit your comments or questions using the chat feature. And remember that your questions are visible by the entire group. Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, action items from the planning commission. And we do have one item from the planning commission, which is the replat of three separate lots at 5399 Martway Street. The service, would you please provide us with your report?
Hey. Um, let's see. Can everyone see my screen okay and hear me okay?
Yep.
Can you, okay.
It's loaded.
There we go.
So the subject property is 5399 Martway Street, the site of the former Mission Bowl bowling alley that Mr. Floodman was presenting on earlier. The owner of the property right now is Ridgeview North Associates LLC, who owns Mission Mart across the street. They have a contract pending to sell lot six of the proposed plat to Mission Bowl LLC. As you recall and were refreshed just moments ago, earlier this year, Mission Bowl LLC submitted a preliminary development plan application to the city for construction of an apartment building on lot six that you're seeing here. The planning commission and the city council approved the preliminary development plan with conditions at their meetings on August 24th and September 16th respectively. So at this time, the owner of the property is requesting approval of this replat, which would allow the legal transfer of ownership of lot six shown here. If the apartment project moves into the final development phase, there'll be revisions, the easements that Mr. Floodman referenced earlier in accordance with the conditions of the preliminary development plan approval. But for now, we're just considering the application in front of us today, which proposes to replat the lots two, three and four of the final plot of Mission Mart. So these three original lots would turn into the two lots shown on the replat. Both the current and the possible future apartment use of the site would be in conformance with city code under the new plat. So staff recommended to the planning commission that they approve the plat, which is case two zero dash zero seven. The plat of Mission Mart, second plat, a replat of lots two, three and four. And the planning commission voted eight to zero at their November 23rd meeting to approve the plat with the condition that the final plat is stamped and signed by a licensed surveyor. So today, the city council can consider this for final approval.
All right, thank you for that report. I would request a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve the replat of Mission lots two, three and four at 5399 Martway Street in Mission, Kansas.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Slash Mocker.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Anne Bolton House.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. That carries us to item number seven, committee reports. Councilmember Kring, would you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Thank you, Mayor, and this may be a bit lengthy, so bear with us, please. The Finance and Administration Committee met on December 2nd and December 19th and considered 13 items, including acceptance of the meeting minutes, the renewals for carrot workers' compensation insurance, IT services contract and CMB licenses, along with the 2021 special alcohol tax fund allocations. They were all approved under the consent agenda. There are seven additional items for consideration on tonight's regular agenda. Seven A is an ordinance related to the establishment of Mission Bowl TIF district. Sunflower Group has been in discussions with the city to redevelop 5399 Martway, which is the former Mission Bowl property into a multi-family project. Mission Bowl Apartments LLC has requested the city to consider using both tax increment financing and industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, to establish a public-private partnership, which would be mutually beneficial for both the city and the developer. In accordance with statutory requirements, the TIF project plan was considered by the planning commission on October 26, 2020, and determined to be in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan. A public hearing was also conducted earlier in this meeting to discuss the division of the district and the TIF project plan. The final step in authorizing the use of tax increment financing TIF for the Mission Bowl Apartments LLC project is consideration of an ordinance which will accomplish, one, approving removal of certain real property from redevelopment district number three, two, dividing redevelopment district number three into two, three, adopting a redevelopment project plan, and four, approving execution of a redevelopment agreement. If the ordinance is passed, the 20-year TIF clock for the single project site within redevelopment district three A would begin upon publication of the ordinance. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance, making certain findings, and one, removing certain real property from Rock Creek redevelopment, redevelopment district number three, two, dividing Rock Creek redevelopment district number three into two redevelopment districts, three, adopting a redevelopment project plan for redevelopment district number three A, and four, approving the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Mission Bowl Apartments LLC.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Yes, Hillary.
Thank you. I just wanted to share, I don't think a TIF vote is anything that any council member takes lightly. And this has been a really long process. And I just want to thank staff for your thoughtful, hard work on this. And also thank the developer for continuing to meet the city on various priorities that the city has had, including sustainability and affordable housing. I'll be voting in support of the development agreement and other elements of what we're voting on right now. And I just am excited to see council come around, hopefully in consensus around this project, especially on a site like Mission Bowl that's so sentimental to our community. And I look forward to seeing it built and it being there for years to come.
Yes, Sully.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Hillary, I, I'm in support of this project. I really view it as setting a new baseline for TIF considerations in our city. You know, we've worked really hard, thanks to council members and staff and the developer, and in particular Banks, Banks Floodman for his cooperation to get affordable housing and sustainability elements, including LEED Silver certified into this project. And I really look forward, you know, to turning that into workable policy that we can use for future projects in the city as well.
Anybody else? Yes, Trent.
Yeah, I'd like to echo all that and also just pleased that our Sustainability Commission played a role in shaping some of these standards too. It's just a example of the, the commission working as intended. And I'm also happy to be supporting this project tonight. I'm, I'm really pleased with all the work and the good faith conversations that everyone involved has done, so.
All right, anybody else?
Mayor.
Nick. Then Hillary.
Sorry, I'd like to echo that as well and just thanks to staff, Sustainability Commission, our bond council and everybody that's been, been working on all this, along with Banks and his team. It's clear everyone's been really doing the work to bring a quality project here. To Hillary's point, I don't think any of us take this very lightly. I know the Mission Bowl site has been there for a long time. It's got a lot of sentimental value to a lot of people. But again, if we really want to move things forward in the city, if we want to build back better, I think this is a, a great step in that direction. So I'm excited to see this move forward.
Hillary.
Thank you. I apologize. I know I already talked. I just wanted to also thank Banks for really listening to, to council members and constituents concerns about design and color schemes and taking those considerations to heart as you explore final site plans for the planning commission.
My pleasure.
All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Inman.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Davis. Thomas.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
And Slash Mocker.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
And I.
Thank you, everybody.
I do want to say just for the benefit of the public that the adoption of this ordinance did require a two-thirds majority vote of the council. And obviously, we surpassed that this evening, so. Thank you all, and we'll look forward to breaking ground in 2021.
Thank you, everybody. Look forward to working with you all.
You too.
Thank you, Banks.
Next, Mayor, we have seven B, which is resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds. The next item also relates to the redevelopment of the former Mission Bowl property. In addition to the request for tax increment financing, the developer has also submitted a formal application. In addition to the request for tax increment financing, the developer has also submitted a formal application for the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, for the sole purpose of a sales tax exemption on construction materials. The IRBs and the associated interest shall be special limited obligations of the city payable solely out of the amounts derived by the city under a lease agreement. The bonds are not a general obligation of the city and are not backed by the full faith and credit of the city. The bonds are not payable in any manner by taxation, but shall be payable solely from the funds provided for in the indenture. The resolution anticipates the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed thirty million dollars. The issuance of the bond does not obligate the city, the state, or any other political subdivision thereof to levy any form of taxation or to make any appropriation for their payment. The city is in no way responsible for the repayment of these bonds.
Bear with me.
Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution establishing the intent and authority of the city to issue industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed thirty million dollars to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping multiple facilities for the benefit of Mission Bowl Apartments LLC.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Slash marker.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Great. Next, Mayor, we have seven C, which is the 2021 legislative priorities. The 2021 legislative program outlines the city's priorities and areas of interest of concern or concern to be communicated, communicated, pardon me, to our state legislators at the outset of the legislative session. This final document has been updated from the 2020 program, which was modified at the November fourth and December second Finance and Administration Committee meetings. The city's legislative advocate, Stuart Little of Little Governmental, Little Government Relations, excuse me, also provided input and feedback for the upcoming session. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve the 2021 legislative priorities for the city of Mission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Sully.
I just had one quick question for Laura, maybe for the benefit of the public. If we approved these legislative priorities, could you maybe explain how they're used by the city?
Certainly. We, once approved, we will put these into kind of their final form, and we will provide these to each one of our legislators. And then certainly, we use them throughout the course of the legislative session as, as items are discussed or specific bills or legislation is introduced to be able to communicate our position. We work with other cities in Johnson County and particularly here in the northeast area to look for areas of commonality or places where we can collectively put our voices together. And then Mr. Little and, and his staff will assist us, if appropriate, to submit testimony at various points throughout the legislative session, and, and this can kind of help us form the basis or the beginnings of some of that work.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Davis. Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Anne slash marker.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Next, Mayor, we have seven D, which is Personnel Policies and Guidelines Update. Each year, staff conducts a review of the city's personnel policies and guidelines. Review ensures that the city's personnel policies conform with the most current federal and state regulations and accurately reflect the organization's current policies and practices. The city's External Human Resources Consultant has completed a review of the recommended updates, and only minor adjustments were made since the document was presented at the December second Finance and Administration Committee meeting. The recommended changes include the addition of paid parental and caregiver leave at one hundred percent of the employee's regular straight-time pay. Other modifications include an update to say that requests for non-police personnel information from outside the organization will require a subpoena as well as a modification in the holiday compensation policy and clarity on occasions when work from home may be granted. Once approved and following publication, it will be incorporated into the personnel policy and guidelines as a part of Mission's municipal code with an effective date of January first, 2021. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance adopting the changes proposed to the city of Mission Personnel Policies and Guidelines effective January first, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hillary.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for making these updates, particularly paid family leave, bringing that to us. This has long been a priority of mine over the past couple of years, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition. I think it's a great reflection of our value of staff and look forward to seeing staff members enjoy that leave.
Anybody else? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Slash marker.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
And Crane.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Next, Mayor, we have item seven E, which is Agreement for Enforcement of the Johnson County Public Health Order. On November thirteenth, 2020, the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners, sitting as the Johnson County Board of Public Health, adopted Johnson County Board of Public Health Order number zero zero two dash twenty in an effort to slow the spread of COVID-19 within the county. Among other things, the order established certain social distancing requirements and limitations on gatherings for individuals, businesses, and activities. The order became effective at twelve oh one AM on Monday, November sixteenth, 2020, and remains in effect through eleven fifty-nine PM on January first, thirty, excuse me, January thirty-first, 2021, unless otherwise amended, revoked, or replaced. In order to better allow the county to enforce its own health order, the county adopted Resolution number one oh eight dash twenty on November nineteenth, 2020, making noncompliance with the Order zero zero two dash twenty a violation of the Johnson County Code. The county has requested that cities within Johnson County approve an agreement specifically allowing for county enforcement of the health order. That agreement has been prepared for council consideration and approval. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council authorize the mayor to execute the Government Enforcement Services Agreement for Johnson County Local Health Officer Orders and County Board of Health Orders between Johnson County and the city of Mission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Thomas.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Slash marker.
Aye.
And Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Our next item is seven F, which is the 2021 Budget Ordinance. As part of the annual budget process, the city takes formal action to adopt the 2021 budget by ordinance. This ordinance represents one of two ordinances that are considered each December to finalize the city's annual budget and to provide expenditure authority. There are no changes to the budget that was approved by the city council in August 2020. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance adopting the 2021 budget of the city of Mission, Kansas.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Comments? I just want to thank Laura and staff for putting together a phenomenal budget. They do this every year. It's very cumbersome, and it's, it requires a lot of integrity, and I think they do a phenomenal job. I just want to take my hat off and say, great job.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to echo the comments that Councilmember Crane indicated. It's also important that this year, we've had to make adjustments with COVID, and I really, my hats off to the staff for doing an awesome job pulling this budget together. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Slash marker.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Anne Flora.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. And our last item for the evening, Mayor, under Finance and Administration, is seven G, an ordinance directing city administrator to spend according to budget. The second ordinance of the annual budget process will authorize the city administrator to spend in accordance with the approved annual budget and will remain in compliance with City Council Policy one zero two. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to make expenditures in accordance with the adopted 2021 annual budget.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this item. Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Slash marker.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes our report.
All right. Councilmember Flora, would you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on December second and considered five items. These included acceptance of the committee minutes, along with the Apollo Gardens Stormwater Repairs, the Conceptual Park Master Planning, and the 2021 and 2022 Street Preservation Engineering Services contracts, which were approved under the consent agenda. There are no additional items to consider on the regular agenda tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, new business. We do have one item of new business this evening, which is the consideration of a massage establishment license. Audrey, would you please provide us with an update?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, according to Mission's municipal code, anyone that is opening a massage establishment in the city is required to submit an application and have that considered by council. Angela Jansen, who is the new owner of Stem Hair and Body Salon that is going into fifty-nine fifty-nine Broadmoor, has submitted her necessary documentations for that application and is hoping, is intending to open in early January. Her background check is currently in process. Following approval of the application and the three hundred dollar fee, the license will be renewed annually based on the square footage. Mrs. Ms. Jansen will not be the masseuse on staff. However, she's hired Deborah Snow Cook to be the masseuse, and she has also submitted and is in process with documentation, which that can be approved administratively. So that is everything for her report, and if there's any questions, I'll take those as well.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve the massage establishment permit for Angela Jansen Stem Hair and Body Salon at fifty-nine fifty-nine Broadmoor Street, pending final approval of all background checks.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Inman.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Anne slash marker.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, that concludes item nine. Moving on to item ten. These are comments from city council. It's an opportunity from comments from our council members. Does anybody have any comments they would like to make? Yes, we'll go with Hillary first, then Debbie.
I just wanted to say that this has been a really tough year, if you weren't already aware. This has been a really hard year on everyone, and it's been really hard to be away from fellow council members and the mayor and staff. I, I look forward to hopefully being in person with you all again in 2021 and reconnecting and helping move our city ahead.
All right, Debbie.
I just want to commend our staff. The staff in all departments are really stepping up to the plate with all these families in need, whether it be the Family Adoption Program or the Food Bank at Trinity Lutheran. It is collectively, each department has taken a role and just moved forward in fulfilling our community's need across the board. And I just want to say thank you. Penn's Group, Celia's Group, the Police Department, the administration, they've all stepped up and just done an outstanding job, and this city should be proud of what it does for its constituents and the families in this community. Thanks.
All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll move from item ten on to item eleven, Mayor's Report. I do have several items this evening. First off, each year end, you know, we have offered our employees a recognition for their hard work during the year. So this year, I, we, I think we would like to offer the employees four hours' time off to be used. Normally, we would do this during the holiday season, and this kind of got through the cracks a little bit, so we apologize. But the four hours, if it's okay with council for the time off, would, would, we would just have, have it be used by January thirty-first, if that's okay with everybody. All right, second item is just kind of the adoption, family holiday adoption program has been going really well. We completed the Thanksgiving one. We're coming up on the holiday one. And our fundraising has been going really well, so I'm really pleased with that. But I do want to remind people, it's not too late. If you would like to contribute to this very worthy cause that is city, you know, homegrown from the city of Mission, and as Councilmember Crane mentioned, a lot of work goes into it, a lot of volunteers. We sure could use those contributions to help our families out, so. Next, we do have several appointments to consider for, for our, two of our commissions and one of our boards. We appreciate the service of these community volunteers tremendously, and their hard work in guiding important decisions, which have a direct and positive impact on the city. I know it was mentioned earlier, the Sustainability Committee, Commission, playing an important role in our, in our new development that's coming to Mission. First, I would put before you new appointments of Ellen Parker, Ward Three, and Hunter Lindquist, Ward One, for the Sustainability Commission, with terms expiring December thirty-first, 2022. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the city council to appoint Ellen Parker and Hunter Lindquist for the Sustainability Commission, with terms expiring December thirty-first, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these two appointments?
I see them both here, so I wonder if they want to talk to us.
Ellen and Hunter, do you want to say something?
No, just excited to help.
Yeah, I would echo that. I'm a three L, I'm in my last year of law school at KU Law, and I've lived in Mission here for, this is my third year. So I'm really excited to get more involved and contribute in whatever way I can.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Audrey, please call for the vote.
Slash Mocker.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Edman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
And Flora.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Next, I put before you the reappointments of Stuart Braden, Ward One, Frank Bruce, Ward Three, Charlie Torpedo, Ward Three, Mike Lee, Ward Four, and Robin Duclo, Ward Four, for the Planning Commission with terms expiring December 31st, 2022. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ken.
Mayor, I move the City Council uphold the reappointments of Stuart Braden, Frank Bruce, Charlie Torpedo, Mike Lee, and Robin Duclo for the Planning Commission with terms expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Yes, Sally.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to thank all these members for their enthusiasm and willingness to serve again. I just have one question, which was, do we have others, you know, waiting in the wings who are interested in serving on our Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals? I know that we're actively recruiting for some of our other boards, so I just was wondering if you could kind of give us the landscape on interest of our various boards and commissions.
Laura, do you want to answer that question?
Well, we haven't had anybody who has approached us specifically with that interest, but we also haven't put out, you're correct, we haven't put out a specific call for for the Planning Commission. We have had, I do have to say that in the last several years, we have had more turnover or new members introduced on the Planning Commission than than we had, you know, several years ago. It tends to be a very stable commission and and by nature, I think that's important, not that you don't want to introduce and give that opportunity, but making some of those decisions as it relates to the long-term comprehensive plan and development goals in the community, it helps to have some of that history that comes along with us. So, you know, currently, we don't have any sort of term limitations for Board and, you know, Board and Commission members. And so we've, you know, as people have served us and expressed an interest to continue to serve, we've historically made those reappointments.
Got you. That that makes sense, Laura. I was just wondering on, because I know we submit people for various boards and commissions and I have people who, you know, express general interest, but then sometimes I don't see what what border commission they end up saying they're interested in. So that's good, good info.
And we still have some boards we still need to go through the process. So this is the first, kind of the first wave of these appointments. All right, any other discussion? All right, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Edman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Slash Mocker.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
And Rothrock.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, the final reappointments are Stuart Braden, Ward One, Robin Duclo, Ward Four, Erin Winger, Ward Two, and Mike Lee, Ward Four, for the Board of Zoning Appeals with terms expiring December 31st, 2022.
Mayor, I move the City Council uphold the reappointments of Stuart Braden, Robin Duclo, Erin Wingard, and Mike Lee for the Board of Zoning Appeals with terms expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Aye.
Edman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Slash Mocker.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
All right, that concludes item 12. Let's move on to item, I'm sorry, item 11, moving on to item 12, the City Ministries Report. Ms. Smith, would you please provide the report?
Thank you, Mayor. First, just briefly, I do want to touch on the October-November monthly financial interim financials, which were updated to the packet today and those links were shared. I don't want to spend a lot of time in this. And my apologies for October being, excuse me, being late. We've we've had a few other big projects that we have required a lot of our attention over the last several last several weeks, but in particular, I would just touch on a couple of points in the November report. One, don't be frightened by the general fund revenues in the month-to-date columns that you will see. Our sales tax, just with reporting and recording, didn't hit by the time we closed the month of November. And so that will, we will have a double sales tax showing and kind of the reports coming out of government are in the comparison charts that I've provided, though, in the executive summary, I have captured those receipts, sales tax receipts for the month of November. And I'm pleased to report that we we our sales tax continues to just track with our budgeted figures. So sales tax is going to be something that helps to really close that gap in our budget that we anticipated earlier this year when when we were looking at both adjustments to 2020 and looking forward to 2021. In fact, when you look at the use tax comparison and and data and in the monthly financials for the month of November, we've actually exceeded our estimated budget projections through this month. So we will, that that's a good trend and we will absolutely take that. So sales tax is strong. We continue to to see the greatest declines in community center revenues. And I think, you know, we things just kind of continue to change and evolve daily in terms of what we think may happen. I think, you know, the the distribution, although it will be slow and and we certainly don't anticipate that, you know, it's going to take the better part of next year to probably get us to a point where that's readily available to everyone, but I think that's going to be the biggest driving force and probably changing the usage and attendance and opportunities for us to get the community center kind of back up online and and running. We will receive, we should receive, actually, I think the county is planning to cut checks, also not reflected in these financials. County is planning to cut checks for the the Community Resource Fund, the CARES dollars that were allocated to us, which were just slightly over $300,000. I think those checks will be cut tomorrow or Friday of this week and will be delivered to us prior to year end. Then we will have the opportunity and we won't likely know until the very last week of December, but there is, I think, a strong possibility that we will have some additional CARES funding that will will be coming to us and to every other city in Johnson County as a result of funds that were unspent in particularly the phase two and phase three allocations of the county's original plan. So as we get kind of those pieces nailed down here this week and next week, we'll be able and what I will present you before the, I'll distribute it via email and then we can touch on it at our January meeting, is really just an updated. You'll feel like you're looking at that general fund budget summary worksheet that that we get with the budget that kind of shows us where we are and truly what that impact on our fund balance has been and how much of the excess fund balance we've had to dip into this year to manage kind of the situation that that we've been facing. So happy to answer any questions now or at any point on these interim financial reports. If no questions, I just have a couple of other end-of-the-year comments.
Sally.
Yeah, I just have one quick question since you mentioned the CARES funds. I know it was sort of a race to the finish line to get things in by the end of December. Are we feeling like we're in good shape to get our projects completed so that we'll be getting our full allocation?
So part of what has caused us to take a little bit of a detour is that the county took a detour as well in terms of how they were going to handle that allocation and it provided quite honestly, some very welcome relief in terms of meeting some of those deadlines. And so they made a decision oh, about a month, well, less than a month ago, that they would reimburse or that police payroll, specifically police payroll, would be a reimbursable expense. And so what they allowed us to do was to step back and to submit from March 1st through you know, year-to-date public safety payroll, so just regular hours and overtime hours, no employer health and welfare benefits or other employer expenses. And that they used that to get us to our allocation, the cap that was that was offered under phase one. So we were guaranteed that we weren't going to lose any of of that money and that gives us some flexibility then. Certainly, we've got many of these other projects in in process, but we were going to be racing to December 31st to get, you know, things done. So that was, you know, we we had to shift gears a little bit and we've been pulling together some additional financial information to make sure that we could take advantage of that. And so having submitted those last week, then that will be, if there are other funds that are available, we don't need to do any additional work for the county. They will go back to that, those public safety payroll expenditures and then the documentation is done and that's how they will determine. And we had a little over a million dollars in police payroll expenses. So we certainly have enough cushion to take advantage of any other dollars that might that might be provided. So that was an early Christmas present, I suppose. But on that note, the touchless fixtures are all now complete at the community center. They started on installation of all the touchless faucets and fixtures at City Hall in the Police Department today. Audiovisual upgrades at both the City Hall Council Chambers and the Community Center. I think Community Center is complete, Emily, I think, was the report that I got today and specta- or almost complete, but spectacular. So we can't wait to kind of show you the capabilities that we've been able to, you know, put in place there. Laptops are here, getting ready to to get those configured and out to employees. The Clorox sprayers have been here. And I know departments are taking full advantage of of the opportunities to do more frequent sort of sanitizing and cleaning with those. So it has been and and then the cubicle installation, that was probably the one that was the the greatest concern to us, but that is is moving along. And I I have to say that our incident command team and really all of the leadership team, I think I said this last month as well, but but in a lot of extra hours to make sure we could get these get these projects done. And I think it's a lot of really great improvements for employee safety and also for the safety of our public that visits our facilities. So excited to get those wrapped up.
Great.
Right, anything else?
I I do have just, I, you know, I usually make a few comments at the end of the year and try to recap. And I've really struggled, as Councilmember Thomas said, this has been a pretty tough year. And so as we get to the point where we're, you know, kind of concluding our final business meeting of 2020 and looking back, I think we would all agree that this is definitely a year that we will not soon forget. There've been a lot of words that I would be okay if we never have to use again, things like pandemic and unprecedented times and uncertain times, social distancing, flattening the curve. It, you know, it's amazing just how much we've used them and how much they've become a part of our vocabulary in just a few very short months. And, you know, I've struggled over the last week and particularly today, trying to figure out the right words to accurately sum up this year. I recently saw a picture of a 2020 dumpster fire holiday ornament. And I thought, you know, maybe that truly represents all the things we've been through this past year. And I'm certainly as happy as most probably to bid this year farewell, but despite the challenges that we've had and the stresses that we've had, I think it has also had some very bright moments. I think we've worked together to engage our residents and businesses in new and creative ways. And I think that's something that's going to serve us well long into the future. Probably most exciting for me is I've seen employees find new strengths and rise to tackle new challenges with attitudes like I've I've not seen and experienced before. So tonight really isn't the night to recap all of our projects and successes. That day will come, you know, pretty soon around the corner. I feel like tonight is the night for us to all kind of breathe just a collective sigh of relief and to pause and remember that the, that, you know, the personal interactions that I know we are all desperately missing and to remember why we've all chosen to make the sacrifices that we have in the name of public service. There've been a lot of days in the last several months that I wasn't sure where the road of 2020 was heading. But I can say with great certainty that there wasn't a single day that I wasn't grateful for the opportunity to experience this with each one of you. And my New Year's wish and resolution is going to come a little bit earlier and that is that we can face 2021 with a renewed sense of purpose and optimism as we serve this community that is so very important to every single one of us. I just hope that each one of you will be blessed during this holiday season in whatever way is most meaningful to you. And thank you for allowing me and for us, your staff, to be a part of our city's story in in this crazy year. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Well said, Ms. Smith.
Well, Laura, this, maybe you guys can't see it, but this is a dumpster fire right here.
That's the one I saw. I love it. I can't wait.
Cutting it off.
I can see it. I know exactly what it looks like. Thank you.
All right, that concludes item 12. Moving on to item 13, executive session. We do not have a need for an executive session this evening. So before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this.
I forgot one really important thing.
Right, Laura?
I forgot our year-end video. Ms. Randall has worked so hard on her year-end.
Worked so hard.
Okay, she's worked to put together our year-end video. So before we conclude our meeting, we would like to just share our 2020 year-end video. I'm sorry.
It's a tradition. It's not anyone's best work, but we have to do it. I will say, making it was so interesting because what you'll see is at the beginning, all the photos are chronological. So there will be the long ago memories of January, February, and even the first week of March when we were not masked. So that, those are those photos. We start with the pride of Mission, the snowplows ready to go for the snowy season. So you'll see that first. And let me know, there should be music in the background. I hope that that is achieved, but let me know if you don't hear any music. but let me know if you don't hear any music.
Thanks for watching.
Nicely done.
All right, before we adjourn this tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through our link on our website, missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned, happy holidays.
Thank you.